All right. Good evening, everyone. Can I please have a motion to reconvene into open session?
I motion to reconvene into open session.
Thank you. Motion made by Jimenez, seconded by, I'll second, seconded by Dressel. On the roll call, I or Nae, please. Oh, wait, it was, I'm sorry. Seconded by Dressel, it was moved to reconvene open session at 7:01 PM.
W. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Jay Gonzalez, absent. Dressel?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
White LaGrand?
Aye.
Jimenez? Steinfeld, aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carried. Can I please have the roll call to establish the quorum?
Dressel?
Here.
Dawn?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Steinfeld, here. Jay Gonzalez, absent. White LaGrand?
Here.
Uh, W. Gonzalez?
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice from.
Okay, thank you very much. For anyone in the audience that needs Spanish translation, I will point you over to Julie Escobar, our family liaison for translation services. Uh, I'm sorry, interpretation services. And I will also turn it over to Mary, Dr. Havas, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here. So we're kicking off the superintendent's report by celebrating all of our board members. So yesterday was, yes, yesterday was School Board Member Appreciation Day, and we have a resolution from the Illinois Association of School Boards that I'd like to read. So whereas school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and prudent expenditure of tax dollars, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools, that sets high standards for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy and are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas school board members selflessly volunteer countless hours of public service with no compensation. And whereas school districts have faced challenges over the recent years, and the strong dedicated leaders, leadership provided by the District 100 Board of Education has allowed student learning and success to continue. And whereas the support by fellow partners in educational excellence has provided for schools to return to normalcy and pre-pandemic instructional practices. And whereas employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members generously lending support and time, employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of school districts and the communities they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to their employer. And whereas decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life and safety in their communities, placing them as the front line of local democracy. Therefore, be it resolved by Berwyn South School District 100 that we proclaim November 15th as School Board Members' Day as a way to honor those citizens who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children and our future leaders. We know the amount of time and dedication that all of you put into being board members for our district, and we recognize you and appreciate all of your contributions to our district. So thank you. You'll have, you have a little, little District 100 swag to show your pride and a flower there to thank you again for all that you do for our community. So happy board member appreciation.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the, my fellow board members for your service and your dedication to the district. It's an honor to serve with you.
Likewise. Go ahead. Likewise. All right. So now we will move on to our school spotlight, which this month is Piper Elementary School. So we would like to, oh, thank you. We'd like to welcome up Eileen Piper Simpson and Erin Paris as our building administrators to share the Piper story.
Okay. Buenos noches. Estoy muy feliz de estar aquí y compartir algunas cosas extraordinarias que están sucediendo en Piper. Good evening. We're super excited to be here tonight to tell you about the great things that are going on at Piper through our cycle of continuous improvement. I am Eileen Piper Simpson, the proud principal at Piper.
And I am Erin Paris, the assistant principal at Piper. Trying to use this. All right, probably not. There we go. Wonderful. Okay. Risk, like this. Explore and achieve are three words that propel our mission at Piper, and our vision can be simplified into two statements. Recognizing potential and to become global citizens. Tonight, we're going to share about our cycle of continuous improvement and celebrate our dynamic staff, which you can see here interacting with each other and our community. At Piper, our staff strives to know more about the whole child. Our data, both quantitative and qualitative, support and help us learn more about our students. During the 2021-2022 school year, the Piper team developed this image. This is the data portrait of Piper Elementary School. It represents all the quantitative data, for example, our map assessments, FMP, IAR, our curriculum assessments, and our qualitative data that we use when designing instruction to meet the needs of our students and ensure they recognize their full potential. It is a common expression to view the whole person when discussing students. However, at Piper, we wanted to actualize what that meant. All of our interactions with our students and families are reflected upon and considered when discussing our quantifiable data. We use all possible data, data sources to determine trends, identify areas of successes and needs, and plan for professional development.
Starting with our review of the benchmark data in the spring of 2020, Piper staff began assessing where we were at and where we wanted to go. The next step was to align our plan and noticings with the D-100 strategic plan and initiatives. This was completed over the summer and included identifying and a focus area for the elements of learning, and Piper selected real-world applications. In the fall, we continued to make sure that we were on the right track by looking at fall benchmark assessments and in, and instructional survey. Articulation through our core leaders ensured district articulation.
During the 21-22 school year, our school worked to implement our Bridges Math curriculum with fidelity and as effectively as possible. We felt that by knowing the intricacies of the three main components of the curriculum, the investigations, the workplaces, the number corner, we would be able to better plan and support our students this year. We were able to take the quantifiable data and qualitative data that we observed during the classroom instruction and combine it with our other district resources. One example is like Dreambox, that app. And using our building expert, our math expert, to support a more constructivist approach to our math instruction. So according to our data from the map assessment last year, our students not only outperformed the projected growth of their grade level, but some of them actually soared to the moon with it. This is represented with the blue bars showing the growth over top of the yellowish-orangeish triangles, which is their projected growth. We had every grade level in math score over the 70th percentile when considering conditional growth. So that's looking at a national norm of what would be expected for their growth. And we even had two grade levels hit the 99th percentile for expected growth. Additionally, when analyzing math, IAR, and map data from the 21-22 school year to now, we see that the percentage of students in our high-risk category is decreasing. When reflecting as a team, we felt this was due to students retaining the skills that they learned from last year over the summer. This is reflected in the images by looking at the red group and seeing the bars go down over the years. So our next steps as a school in math is to focus on further differentiating our instruction through backwards planning to make a greater impact on all of our students from those in the first percentile to those in the 99th percentile. Furthermore, in keeping with the goal of real-world application of skills, we want to provide more opportunities for our students to experience the math that they're learning in class as it applies to the real world around them.
So to get an idea of our students' and teachers' needs and in order to work toward a valuable goal in our SIT plan, we used several data points for literacy. We first took a look at our universal screening and standardized assessment data. This image, this image is our school-wide student growth summary. The triangles represent, again, the expected growth of our students, and the blue bars are the observed growth. The Piper data and other data in the district showed the need for a deeper look at our reading and reading instruction. Foundational skills were identified in grades K-2, and word study has been identified in grades three to five. It's interesting to examine reading and all that it takes to read. The visual, this visual is called the Scarborough Rope. When looking at this visual, it's easy to see the complexity of reading. So the next step in our data review led us straight to our, to our teachers who are safe in a collective mindset and psychologically safe in a data culture that exists in D-100. The teachers were surveyed about their self-identified strengths and desired learning goals. All of our data points were leading us towards phonics as a professional learning focus in kindergarten through second. Our literacy coach developed a learning cycle for our K-2 teachers based on the current research aligned with the science of reading. The learning cycle combines professional development, teacher coaching, modeling, observation, teacher goal setting, and reflection. We aligned our budget to invest in the necessary resources needed to implement our plan. Our literacy coach has been presenting professional learning on topics such as explicit teaching of phonics and instructional strategies, including word sorting, blending, dictation, and decodable reading. The coach has then been able to follow up by visiting classrooms to model the instructional strategies and to co-teach or observe during phonics instruction in our classrooms. Students have been engaged and enjoying these strategies, but most importantly, we are developing readers. A specific learning cycle for word study in grades three through five will be initiated in January. As part of our D-100 initiative to leverage our collective efficacy and strengthen our professional learning community, we continue to use backward planning as a process for our literacy instruction development that incorporates science and social studies instruction. This is helping to ensure rigor and deepen real-world application. Zaretta Hammond, one of my favorites, an expert and researcher in the field of culturally responsive teaching and learning, defines rigor as the intersection of content complexity, student cognitive independence, and the teacher's facilitation of productive struggle. Culturally responsive teaching and the brain is the D-100 staff book study for this year. At Piper, we are moving students from learning compliance to intellectual independence and innovation. Our real-world application focus moves us into even deeper critical thinking and rigor as we work to engage students in academic work in a real-world setting or in a realistic task that could be done in the real world.
One part of the dynamic team that ensures our students risk, explore, and achieve is you all, the community that we have. Another part are our families. Our stars at Piper are our Piper Bear students. But tonight, we really do want to celebrate our staff. When we got our Apple Distinguished Award this year, we got to attend the Global Summit, which the main focus was on self-care. Our teachers worked tirelessly. Like last night, we had our art night. So we had a whole group of teachers stay behind to support our art teacher in putting on an amazing community event where we had over 200 people come through the door to experience and create art for our reading garden. So to give them a moment to take time with their families and provide their own self-care, we did give them the night off. What we did is we took this morning and showed them our presentation to celebrate them and a little homage that we made for them. So, Mr. Close, would you be able to roll the film, please? Yeah.
Thank you. Gracias a todos por su apoyo y felicidad. Y si hay preguntas, thank you so much for your support always, and happy Board of Education Day. And if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
That means we did our job well.
Just really quickly, thank you for all that you do with your teachers and supporting them in trying these practices. As a former teacher, I know it can be scary, but it's very much appreciated when the administration supports teachers in their learning. So thank you.
Yes, thank you both for sharing the Piper story and for honoring your staff tonight. It's wonderful. All right. We are going to move on to the Illinois Report Card. As we know, the Illinois Report Card comes out each year at the end of October. There is a ton of information in the Illinois Report Card. It is available on a public site that anyone can go and view. So we will do an overview and a highlight tonight of the various data that is in the Illinois Report Card, and you're also welcome to kind of, to dive deeper and ask any follow-up questions at a later time as well. So when we talk about the Illinois Report Card, it really is, you know, a snapshot of the work that goes on in, in District 100, and it's one piece of the story that we have as a team. So we kicked off our year with talking about, again, that belief that through the collective action of all of our staff, of our Board of Education, we can collectively positively influence student outcomes and experiences. And that is really our focus in aligning eight schools, finding ways to continuously learn from each other so that we can continue to grow as an entire school community and district community. So as we go through this information tonight, we always make sure that these Board of Education and district goals are at the heart of the work we do in District 100. Obviously, we focus on that continuous academic improvement, creating those personalized learning environments, and really supporting our students with social, emotional. We want, we have engaged in restorative practices. We have continued to involve our parent engagement and community partnerships. We, we invest in our staff. We want, we know the importance of what teachers do in the classroom every day, and we do our best to surround them with that support, to create those positive learning environments, to really work with the Board of Education on what those long-range plans look like, and truly being fiscally responsible in making decisions where we're targeting dollars in the places that are going to impact students. And so when you, when you see some of this data tonight, a lot of those goals you will see coming through, as well as those beliefs. Those are those key words that are in our belief statements. But we challenge ourselves to not just have belief statements, but to ensure that our words and our actions match the goals and the beliefs that we have as a district, as a community in South Berwyn. We also strive to, to be leaders, to empower our students and our staff, and to truly create learning environments that are transformed, where kids are continuously learning and exploring, and really raising those expectations for what we can provide in our school systems. So the Illinois Report Card, as I said, is a summary of last year, so the 21-22 school year. We'll start with some basic information. We have our overall district enrollment trends, which, again, continue to show that trend that we've seen for several years with our numbers going down. What we're starting to notice this year is that our elementary schools are stabilizing a bit, but our middle schools are now seeing that, that drop in, in numbers. So when you look at this as a school perspective, from 2016 to 2022, you can really see the differences in those numbers at, at each of our schools. Because the board has continued to invest in, in our school district and we have moved into a better financial situation, we have really been able to sustain a lot of our staff and create smaller class sizes based on these numbers going down. And so while at, at times we would need to decrease based on those numbers, we've been trying to find ways to reallocate those staff members. So if we don't need a first-grade classroom teacher because we don't have the numbers, where else can that position go to further support specifically in areas like intervention, REL supports, social work? Those are things that we've continued to grow, as you've heard me talk about with our EBF dollars. So our overall demographics for our student groups are here on this graph, and they, those have remained pretty consistent as far as demographics. We do have 69% low-income students, 31% English learners, 16% students with IEPs. We have a 1% homeless population, 6% mobility, and 92% attendance rate. You will, if you followed these presentations for, for many years, you'll probably note that attendance is significantly lower than we have seen in the past. We always strive to, our goal was always 98%. We've, we've hovered around 96 or 97 most years. So keeping in mind that anytime we talk about attendance tonight, this was impacted last year still by COVID because we were still having to quarantine students for extended periods of time. So we, we hope to see improvements in that moving forward, but know that those attendance numbers are still impacted because it was last school year. So our teachers are overviewed in the report card as well. We have 270 certified teachers. 56% of our teachers have a master's degree or higher. We do have five National Board certified teachers, three teachers with gifted endorsements. Our, our average salary has grown slightly. Again, keeping in mind that that is not just impacted, that, that number is an average, so it could be impacted by how many new teachers we might have in a given year. It's not just the average compared across the state. On the report card, it lists our student-to-teacher ratio as 14 to 1. That does not mean our class sizes are at 14. What that means is the number of certified teachers. So that would include intervention teachers, EL teachers, coaches. And so it's just the number of total staff that we have in the district to how many students. Our average class size is 20, which has gone down, and we have, for the first time in a long time, reached 82% retention. So we had always been in the 70s. We want to keep improving that, and I know that's also been a goal of the Board of Education. So it is nice to see a number in the 80s for our retention, and we hope to continue to invest in our teachers so that retention continues to get better. So this was mentioned, is what I already mentioned about the absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism is reported. It is a big part, you'll hear me mention this again a little bit later. It is a big part of the rating system in the Illinois Report Card. So chronic absenteeism is the percentage of students who miss 10% or more of school days with or without a valid excuse. So I think this is really important to note because when, if children are sick, they're called in, that does still count toward chronic absenteeism if a student is absent more than 10% of the time. This, this includes with or without. You can see that District 100, our number is high, right? It was quite alarming, 27%. You can also see that that's still below the state. And this is, again, that impact of COVID across the entire state because we were all under those same protocols and, and we're having to quarantine people for longer periods of time. And then we have our chronic truancy, which is also reported. You can see, again, we are below the state in that, which is a good thing, but that's the percentage of students who miss 5% or more school days without a valid excuse. So we're not calling in, we're not knowing, you know, why a student might not be here. So that is more of your truancy. So we were below the state there, but clearly not where we want to be. We want to continue to make sure that kids are in school and learning. So we continue to work with our school teams to support families in making sure our kids get to school. Our students with IEPs, this is an important one to note. It's our educational environment. So looking at, on the left, District 100 versus the state average, is the amount of time kids are spending in general education classes. So as you know, we support co-teaching and want our, our special education students to be included as often as possible. So on the left, you can see that 71% of our special education students are included greater than 80% of the day, and that's in comparison to 54% at the state. And you can see each of those areas represents those beliefs that we have about making sure that we are including our students to the greatest extent possible. So there's those other areas, it's less than 40%, 40 to 70%, and then in a separate facility. And you can see we are much lower than the state in all of those areas because of that focus on inclusion and co-teaching. This is our English learner proficiency, our access assessments. You can see the data there. They did, there was one year that we did not have that data, but you can see the growth there in our, in each area. So we have kids at entering, beginning, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. So obviously, we want to continue to see kids grow So obviously, we want to continue to see kids growing in their English language proficiency. And that really outlines what we've seen over the past several years. The Illinois Report Card also reports students that exit from the EL program, meaning that they have reached English language proficiency. So last year, we had 7.5% of our students exit. So each year, we, we work to improve that percentage. We were slightly above the state in the English language proficiency exits. So academic progress on the Illinois Report Card is broken down in many, many ways. And you could spend probably hours looking at all of the different ways that it can be broken down. So I'll go through a snapshot and then through some, some little bit more highlights. So in, this is our, this is our overall snapshot of IAR and ISA, the Illinois Science Assessment. So the Illinois Assessment of Readiness is in ELA and Math. The Illinois Science Assessment is for Science. So in ELA, we were at 21% meeting or exceeding. The state was at 30. In Math, we were at 20%, the state's at 26. And then in Science, we were just below the state at 47. The state is at 50%. So when we look at ELA proficiency, this is, this is what we are seeing, noting that, that 2019 number on the bottom, that would be pre-pandemic. So you can see that we have not reached our pre-pandemic reading proficiency that we saw back in 2019. We have made slight growth. You know, Eileen discussed this, that it is a district-wide goal that we need to really focus on our ELA proficiency. And you will probably continuously hear, as we speak every month, about schools having that in their school improvement plans. So we want to continue to, to grow in that area. The Illinois Report Card also discusses the growth. And so that is a big portion of how schools are rated. So District 100 growth in ELA was at 47%, and the state was at 50. So we were slightly under the growth percentage, the average growth percentage in ELA as a, as a district. In Math, while our overall proficiency is at 20%, it is a celebration, and it is an area that we saw some nice growth. We were at 15% the year before. We moved up to 20%, and a 5% gain in a year is, is a pretty significant number for assessment. And some of the celebrations in that is that we've really spent, as the Board knows, we've spent the last several years, we invested in a new program at the elementary level, spent a ton of time, our teachers have done an amazing job with the training and implementing of this new program. Partially during COVID, they were learning a new program. And then we're actually, for the, for the first year, doing a lot of that remotely. And so having students back in the classroom and seeing that what we're doing is working is, is great news. The Board would also remember that we invested in math support staff in each of our elementary schools that we did not have before. And so that is certainly helping us move in the right direction. We're, we're not quite pre-pandemic, but we're getting closer in math. And so that is an area of celebration. We surpassed the state growth percentage in Math by 5%. So again, the state growth percentage was 50, District 100 was 55%. And in our science proficiency, we only have two years of data, but you can see we also had really nice growth in Science. Our middle schools adopted a new science program last year. They told us, the students themselves on the Five Essentials Test, or the Five Essentials Survey last year, that was one of our highest areas where students reported that they were engaging in more hands-on learning in Science. And so with the students letting us know that, that they were seeing more of that in the classroom, and then seeing the growth in Science has been a nice addition to, to show that we really did invest in making sure we selected a resource that was going to help. So another piece of the Illinois Report Card is making sure that there's information about funding. As we all know, schools across the state of Illinois are not equitably funded. And so schools are, are all held to the same accountability, but have different funding and different ways that they can, can reach those goals. So this shows our progress with evidence-based funding. And again, thankful to the South Berwyn community and the Board of Education who have continued to help us advocate for investments in evidence-based funding so that school districts like ours can get closer to that target. So the target is all the way on the right, which is 52 million. That means that that's the amount of money that we would need to serve the students in our community. Right now, we are at 37 million. So, but you can see it has slightly gone up each year, and we're getting closer to that target. When we started evidence-based funding back in 2017, I believe it was, we were at 46% adequacy, the sixth lowest-funded district in the state of Illinois. And we have slowly progressed up to 71%, which is very exciting. It's still in yellow because we don't consider it green yet, but we're making progress. Last year, we were considered a Tier 2 district based on the evidence-based funding. This year, we, we are, we've gone back to Tier 1. So that is recalculated every year based on where other districts are. And so your funding is based on what tier you are. So this past year, we got a little bit less in EBF because we were Tier 2. What we have reported right now is that we are Tier 1 for this year. So that would change our funding again for next year. But again, this is, we're trying to reach that adequacy level so that we have that, the funding that we need to serve this, all of the students in District 100. This outlines our per-student spending in comparison to the state. So the left in blue is what we spend per student in District 100, and the right is the state average. So we continue to be below that, which makes sense based on our evidence-based funding pieces that we're still only at 71% adequacy. But you can see we're, we're continuing to grow at pretty much the same rate as the state is growing in, in spending. And I always like to make sure that I highlight this expenditures slide because it's always been a goal of the Board of Education to ensure that we invest our dollars in what is going to directly impact kids. And so this, again, highlights that District 100 in instruction and support services surpasses the state average in what we're putting into those. And then our smaller numbers are in general administration and in other. And so we, this helps us know that, yes, we are, we are making sure those dollars are directed to the right places. And we want to continue to do that moving forward. New to the Illinois Report Card this year is something called the Equity Journey Continuum. This is really only an informational tool. It is the first time that this has been on the Illinois Report Card. And so we are all learning about the Equity Journey Continuum. But it is a tool that has been put in place and puts lots of data into a formula to determine, are we making sure that we are providing all students with what they need and that we're closing gaps in achievement and in opportunities for our students? So there is a lot of data that goes into this. I anticipate we will continue to learn more and share more with you, as this was the first time. But it does break it down into three areas: student learning, learning conditions, and then elevating educators. And so it looks at all of those areas. One of the things to keep in mind with this is that it's using data from the 2018-19 school year. So it's a bit outdated, except for the site-based expenditures are from the 2021. And so this, it gives you progress. Basically, it gives you progress from step 1, meaning that you have large gaps within your district around equity, to step 4, meaning you have very minimal gaps. We were pleased to see that District 100 was really more in that area with smaller gaps. We have, as you all know, we've done a lot of work in our district around equity. We have ensured that we are really looking at our curriculum, any new curriculum adoptions through an equity lens. And so we, as we learn more about this, I think we were, will learn more ways that we continue, can continue to improve what we're doing here in District 100. But for the first time, as this data has been put in to see where we ended up, is, is some positive news for the work that's happening in, in District 100 around equity. So all of that information and more goes into that state accountability system, which is focused on multiple indicators of success. And so within your state accountability, these are the things that go into it. 75% of your accountability score, I guess would be the best way to describe it, is through your academic indicators. And a large percentage of that is for, for school districts is growth. And so, yes, it's important that we are having proficiency, but we also want to make sure that our, our students are meeting and exceeding those growth targets that they have. So in ELA and Math, there's our 25% each. ELA and Math proficiency are 7.5 each. Science is 7.5, or I'm sorry, is 5. It is important to note that for this report card, Science, the 5% score was only based on Science participation. It was not based on the actual scores. They anticipate that next year, that would be the scores. So that will certainly change the overall, the, the overall ratings. And I bring that up because it is very common for things to change from year to year because you're not always comparing apples to apples. And so, you know, each year, when we'd have our Illinois Report Card, if things change, it doesn't mean that it's exactly the same as it was last year. And it's always important to make sure that we're noting that. We also have that EL Progress to Proficiency, which is, looks at our individual students in EL making their proficiency growth each year. That's, that's a bit of a complex calculation, but that is looking at, are they meeting their projected growth based on where they are in their language proficiency? And that counts for 5%. The other piece is that School Quality and Success indicators. There, there has been discussion of having some other indicators in this area. But you'll note that chronic absenteeism is a large percentage, 20%. And so that is something, while we were, we had, did not have a very good chronic absenteeism, neither did anyone in the state, right? But moving forward, we want to make sure we continue to address having kids in school because that is a big percentage of this piece. And obviously, they're learning when they're in school. And then the Climate Survey is our participation of our students, our 4th through 8th grade students in our five essential survey. So again, it's important, our, our schools are amazing about making sure all of our students are providing feedback through the five essentials, but that is measured here as part of our state accountability. So it's an important indicator that we make sure students participate in each year. So from all of those, all of that information, districts across the state are, are then put into some different designations here. Exemplary school is a school performing in the top 10% of schools statewide, and they have no underperforming subgroups. So again, this is based on that, that previous slide. All those things factor into determining where you fall in, in, oops, in your designations. So we have exemplary, commendable, a school that has no underperforming student groups, graduation rate, which, which applies to high school, and performance is not in the top 10% of schools. And so you still aren't having underperforming subgroups, but you're, you're just not in the top 10%. Then we have underperforming school and lowest-performing school. And so those are, are summative designations for our schools across District 100. Everyone was either commendable or exemplary, so let's give our schools a round of applause. And I, the one thing that is really important when we look at this information, it comes out once a year. It's based on information from the previous year. This is a quote from our state superintendent when she sent out some information to us. But the Illinois Report Card is a snapshot built on data meant to both honor achievement, which we, we are able to do, or provide those celebrations, and also inspire improvement, help us find the areas that we need to continue to grow. But it is never to provide a full picture of all the amazing ways schools are connecting with and caring for our students. This is a snapshot in time. But a school, the story of a school district is, goes well beyond that. And so we also want to make sure that we take a few minutes to highlight, where are we now? So when we look at our winter, our, our fall map, reading and math, we wanted to make sure that we highlighted where we are today versus last year. And so this is our start-of-the-year map reading data. And these, this is our growth percentage, so percentage of students that are making their growth targets. And that data on the left starts back in 2017. And you can see in, in our ELA, this fall, our kids had the highest growth percentile that we've seen since 2017. And so we're, we're making some nice progress. We know there's continuous work to be done, but we're seeing that we're, we're able to raise those expectations. Our kids are becoming more prepared and better readers. And when we look at Math, we see even more blue. And so that is significantly higher than we saw in 2019-20, and that is our fall data. And so this gives us a snapshot of where we are now. And in January, our students will be taking their winter map, and we'll be able to see the growth. We'll be able to see areas that we need to continue to target, and just make sure we're continuously monitoring. We don't want to be, we don't want to monitor data once a year on the Illinois Report Card. We want to be doing this consistently so we can take quick action when we're seeing areas that need to improve. So one of the things that we've talked a lot about this year is when we look at that, we know our kids can. And that is what we need to continue to focus on, raise that bar, make sure that kids are exposed to grade level and beyond expectations. Because if we raise, if we expect that high achievement, we know that our students can strive for and reach that high, that high achievement. So I know that is a lot of information, lots of numbers, lots of graphs. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mary. I have a question. On the exiting program for English-language learners, there was a 7.5% exiting of students. Is, do you have data where it shows what percentage per grade level?
We, I'm, we do have that data, and I can, I can get it to you. I don't have it in front of me, but yes, yes, we do have that data.
I was just wondering.
And you can even, yeah, on the, on the Illinois Report Card, you can break it down even further. It goes, you can break it down by grade level, you can break it down by subgroup. There's a lot of information there.
And anybody can access that part?
Yep, yep.
Because I have gone through it, and I have not seen the breakout.
Yeah, and I can send it to you, too. But it kind of, you have to press a bunch of buttons to get there. But I can get it and send it to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Another one. You mentioned about, since 2017, we have been advocating for adequate funding. And I also want to point out that it's also thanks to you. You've been into Springfield several times advocating for that, and there's a 25% increase since then, which is huge for us.
It makes such a difference. It, it's, it's exciting to see what we've been able to invest those dollars in and, and make sure that our kids are getting more support. And so recently, when I, when I talked at a state board meeting about the impact in District 100, that's what I was able to say. Every time we advocate and get more in EBF, that money goes directly to our students to adding supports that our students need. And so it's, it's been amazing to see the difference that that has made. So thank you.
I just wanted to commend you and all of the other District 100 staff on those summative designations. I really feel like our students and what they did on our tests and everything that's being measured by the state show how hard this district is working to serve the children of this community. And that's a really great accomplishment to have seven commendables and one exemplary.
Thank you to our District 100 staff out there. Yes, certainly a reflection of all of the staff in District 100. We really do believe in that team, team and collective work. We really do believe in that team, team and collective work, and that's how we're going to be the most successful. All right. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'll turn it over to Jenny, who's gonna do our levy presentation.
Just to revisit, it's a very short presentation, I only have two slides, but just to revisit the levy overall, levy consists of two parts. It's the operating levy, which is what the Board of Education approves, and then the second part of the levy is the bond levy, and there's now a new line that's added to the levy. We've talked about it last year before, but it's that Public Act 102-0519 that is, they call that the recapture levy, not something that is set by the district, it's something that's set automatic by the county. There we go. Okay, so last month, we reviewed the estimated 22 levy. Now we have actuals, so we can do the rest of the calculations. So you start with your 2021 levy, so your operating levy plus your bond levy gives you the net of the levy. Then they add the public act on top of that to give your total levy. So multiplying the section that's in green is the section that you're voting on to approve tonight, and that is what's on the certificate, the levy certificate that's in Board Book. The operating levy is 4.99 of the 21 levy, and it's 21,907,17. You'll notice the part in blue, our bonds are starting to go down. So our bond levy from last year to this year is going, is going down, which is wonderful. So our total levy then is the 25,894,657. To that, then, the Cook County will add a loss and cost percentage, then they'll apply PTEL. PTEL is that property tax extension limit law, where it does just that, it limits it, it, you can't get too much, and it will reduce it by a factor. And then it adds that Public Act 102-0519. In Finance Committee tonight, we reviewed what the calculations look like, what the various spreadsheets look like, all the what ifs. What if EAV goes way high? What if EAV goes way low? What if new property goes way high? What if new property stays really low? And so going through all the different scenarios, we will still be reduced by PTEL. What does the levy fund? The levy funds roughly 45% of our total revenue for the year. So if you think of revenue as 100%, about 45% of it is from the state, about 45% of it roughly is from, from the levy, and tiny little teeny portion, 10% of it comes from federal grant funds. But what does it fund? It funds, largest part of, of any budget is salaries and benefits. You also have your operation expenses, what keeps the lights on, what keeps the heat on, or air conditioning in the summer. It's also our transportation and our busing, curriculum materials, I could go on and on and on. Any questions? Okay, it is on the agenda tonight.
Jenny, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Do you have an idea of the unknown PA that is going to be? Have they mentioned any kind of bond?
I do not.
No?
I do not. At this time last year, we had a preliminary number. We've reached out, we don't have any preliminary number on what that's going to be.
So it could be anything.
It could be anything.
That's scary. Thank you.
Yeah, we have, it could be nothing, it could be something, we have no idea what that's going to be.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks. The levy, by the way, has to be, just a reminder, has to be filed with the Cook County by the last Tuesday in December. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Jenny. We had two FOIAs this month were, that were submitted. The dashboard has the updated attendance and attendance for students and staff in your Board Book. And back to Jenny for the financial report.
Thank you. Our bank balance, when you hear me at board meetings mention our bank balance, our bank balance is our fund balance. They are one and the same. So our fund balance as of today is 44.8 million. Our revenue to date for the month of November is only 1.5 million. It's very, very low. And majority of that is all EBF funding. You'll also know within Board Book, we, I do have a fund balance report in Board Book that lists the fund balance by fund each month. Our revenue for the month of October was 3.3 million. Total revenue for the year is 12 million, which is very, very low, which it's only 18.93% of our total revenue. Our expenses for the month of October are 4.6 million. Our year-to-date expenses are 18.4 million, which is 31.15, which is right in line around the 33% where you would expect to be this year. If you look on the, the, up there, it says like an estimated of 6 million for expenses. You may ask, why is that so high? November is when we have our bond payment. So our bond payment, majority of the payment is in November, and the rest of that, thanks, Jim, and the rest of it is in May. Going on to the grant snapshot, I'm very frustrated with, we are very frustrated, I'll speak for me and I. We are very frustrated. We have been working very hard with the state to get our Title I, Title II, Title IV grants approved, and they are still not approved, which is beyond frustrating. But you can see our early childhood grants are starting to be spent, are the CARES, the grant, the FG grant, which is the after-school grant, and CARES III. We did finally get, I just got approval today, that our CARES II, our CARES II was approved last year, but then we had to reapply for the remainder of the funds with a funding plan, and that was just approved as of today. And that's the end of my report.
All right, and that is the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you very much. All right, jumping into the president's report, up first, we have the finance report. I have very little to add to Jenny's levy report and financial report. We did discuss the levy in Finance Committee and those items that the levy funds. So I thought that that was an important thing to highlight, especially after the report card highlights regarding funding and how we've been able to move the needle to support our staff and to support our students. And that's really it. All right, policy?
Yes, the Policy Committee met today for the first time in a few months. So we had first reads for seven different policies. They were all, there's just very minor changes, but I will go through them. The first one was about our fiscal and business management regarding cash reserves and how funds are held. Basically, all that was changed in that were legal references. There was another policy about board member conflict of interest. Again, just legal references were changed. The organizational Board of Education meeting, the change in that was that instead of 28 days after the election, now it's 40 days that you can have that meeting. Ethics and gifts bans, either district employees and Board of Education members, was legal references changed. The Title IX sexual harassment policy, were some legal references, and also we need to change the coordinator, since Dr. Bruno is sadly no longer with us. He's still alive, he just left us. I didn't mean to make it sound like he like passed away. He's fine. But he's not here anymore. And then waiver of student fees, they just kind of moved some language around, but it doesn't really make any substantive changes. And then finally, awareness and prevention of child sexual abuse was some language updates and legal references. They're all very minor changes. So if anybody has any questions, then they can reach out to myself or anyone else on the Policy Committee, which is now Wendy and Nicole, so welcome to the Policy Committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Legislative report.
For legislation, there's nothing new, other than, as you may, as you may already know, in the state of Illinois, there are many Democratic wins in the past election. So that means that we keep the, well, Democrats keep the super majorities in the General Assembly. And so the full veto session is in session right now until tomorrow, and then they will reconvene from November 29th to December 1st. And this is the time where they make a decision whether they are going to veto some of them, override some vetoes from previous legislation, so that's what they're doing. Not much.
All right, we'll see what happens next. Thank you. The 2022 resolutions. So this weekend is our IASB conference, and during that conference, our delegate, the delegate assembly meets, so each board member, or each board across the state has a delegate that they send to vote on resolutions that have been proposed by other school districts. And tonight, we discuss those resolutions, and I'm going to turn it over to Amber. She is our delegate.
Did everyone get an opportunity to read through their resolutions? Okay, so does anyone have any questions about the process or anything? No? Okay, wonderful. So we can just go through them. There's eight. And you can just, I would say, if you do not agree with the committee's recommendation, we can talk about those, but if everybody agrees with the committee's recommendations, then I can just go with what they recommend. So one, resolution one, fund balances, the Miller Ratio Adjustment. Committee recommends that we do adopt this. I got a thumbs up. Anybody else? Thumbs up? Thumbs up. Okay, we're doing thumbs up.
Do adopt.
All right, I like thumbs up. Corinne? Thumbs up. All right, excellent. Resolution number two, alternative fueled school bus funding. The resolution, the resolution committee recommends that we do not adopt this.
I disagree.
I disagree as well.
So this resolution is about the state providing funding for school districts to obtain electric and low emission buses, and then also the apparati to charge them.
Yes.
And the rationale provided by the committee is, it just doesn't, it's not holding a lot of water for me. The rationale is that they would need to do some kind of a study, and there was discussion of the funding formula, but that's the work of state legislators, not IASB, right? So it seemed weird that they would put themselves in that position. And then there was apparently a great deal of discussion about how this affects rural districts. So it just feels a little one-sided of a recommendation.
And it does say to, for, if you can't do zero emissions because of the ruralness of your district, you can go partial. I think the, the point really is to move forward towards electric buses, and I think that that's what I would like IASB to support, and let the legislators work out the details.
That's their job.
That's their job. What do you think?
I concur with your disagreement.
Okay. She agrees with my disagreement. I love it. So, yeah, let's do thumbs down. Thumbs down, thumbs down, thumbs down, thumbs down. Okay, thumbs down. All right, and then resolution number three, firearm dealer location. They recommend do not adopt. You agree do not adopt? Okay.
I disagree.
I disagree.
Okay. Okay. I-
I disagree.
I disagree as well.
I expect for, can I ask for your, your rationale as to why you're disagreeing, maybe a misunderstanding?
Sure, absolutely. Does anybody want to?
I think that I support regulating firearms in any possible way, so this is the smallest thing that we can do, so that's my belief.
Yeah, so the resolution would create a larger bubble around schools as far as the proximity of a firearms dealer being able to like open up shop. So as far away from a school building would be, I would be in favor of that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like their big concern is about firearms dealers that already exist there next to the schools.
Again, that's the legislators' problem.
Right.
At the state level.
So thank you for the clarification, because I was misunderstanding some, understanding it, so I would agree that, I would, yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna disagree. Okay, so these are amended existing resolutions. Capital Grant Fund for School Buildings. This amend position statement 2.11 and 2.18, I think they kind of just combined them. They recommend that we do adopt. Thumbs, thumbs up? We're giving thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up. Okay. All right, number five, School Safety Fund, amend position statement 2.2, do adopt. Thumbs up? Thumbs up? Are we? Yeah?
Oh, yeah, I, I did.
Sorry.
Sorry, were you waiting on me?
I'm getting thumbs up from everyone. You must vote. Okay, Involvement with Candidates for Public Office, amend position statement 3.02. They are recommending that we do not adopt.
I, it's fine. So this resolution, I really think is just parsing out some language. The suggestion is that when IASB is evaluating candidates, that they separate their stances from the candidate and only evaluate them on their position, in order to keep politics out of it, but regardless of a state candidate's political affiliation, can you, can you separate the two? The position from the candidate? So I just-
Okay, so-
Anybody else?
So I have a question on this one. Is this talking about legislators that maybe as IASB as a group, we would support?
No.
Or-
Well-
When they evaluate school board candidates? Is that, that's where I make confusion is on this one.
Not school board candidates.
Legislators.
Right, legislators.
Or candidates, legislators. Okay, that's what I, okay, that's what I thought. So they are basically trying to put like a report card for each of the legislators and then base it on what, how, what they support and they don't support?
I don't know if they're going that far as to create something like that. The change is, so the change is in the title, to strike candidate and change legislation position.
Yeah, that's not a big difference, based on the language.
Yeah, it's like, instead of supporting candidates, you're supporting principals.
And the difference is that, and, well, at least what they're striking at is they're talking about if they support public education, or do they support the legislation? And sometimes it may be a legislation not related to education, which-
Right. And then, so the Resolutions Committee analysis, the reason why they're saying they don't recommend for adoption. The committee discussed the intent of the current position statement 3.02 in relation to the proposed amendment, and felt the current language should remain. And the current language, "The Illinois Association of School Boards shall actively encourage and assist school board members to effectively evaluate legislative positions relative to public education as they affect," this is the part that they want to cut out, "as they affect-" they affect, this is the part that they want to cut out, as they affect of legislative candidates relative to public education, and to support those candidates who have demonstrated understanding for support for, that's the part they want to strike. So the new one would read, evaluate legislative positions relative to public education as they affect the principles of school management to ensure the best education for public school students in Illinois. They're taking out the person and just focusing on the principles.
They're also taking out the word support of education, which I think is, that's a little triggering.
I think that, my personal opinion is, is that it's trying to, sneakily, I don't know if that's the correct word, but trying to under the radar, say that they are not going to consider, or they don't want the Illinois Association of School Boards to consider support for public education and who they endorse or support. And I think that that would be contrary to my position as a board member of a public school district.
Agreed.
So I think they're trying to kind of neuter their political position in some ways. I don't know if that's what they're going for, but that's how I read it.
And, so this is a submitted by Indian Prairie School District, which is in Topeka, and that also, I mean, that's what, that's how I am feeling about it.
So we're in consensus that we agree not to adopt?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, that's how we want you to vote, do not adopt. Agree with the committee.
Agree with the committee. Cool. Okay, okay.
And just so, I'll make a clarification for the new board members, is that when our delegate goes in front, there's a lot of positions, and many of the delegates will come and speak on behalf of their position or against their position. There may be positions that maybe she changes her mind, and she has the right to do that, even, I mean, that is part of the job, we just recommend it, but then maybe she feels that, oh, maybe this is better? It's okay. At least that's what I've been told.
I would say that you should vote in, the way the board has directed you to.
Even if the information that is given there is going to be, I'm just speaking based on the different information that is going to be coming. I mean, you've been there many times.
Yeah, I, I absolutely hear what you're saying, and there is debates that happen during the delegate assembly. I do think that they put out a lot of information and give us a lot of time to ask questions and get more information if we were uncertain about certain resolutions. So I, I am more comfortable just voting on how you guys are directing me, and then maybe afterwards, if there's something came up, I could bring it up at the next meeting when I share the, how it went, and maybe we could readdress it for future delegate assemblies. I just, I feel like the delegate is directed by their board that they're representing. But I totally hear what you're saying, because there are debates and things do come up.
And I'm just thinking of the training that I received when I was a delegate, and that's what we were told.
Okay. Okay, mandates review committee, this is an amendment of position statement six point oh-two, and they're recommending do adopt. Yeah, thumbs up? Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Corinne? They're just reviewing the mandates?
I just, I am unsure about the, they want, that they want a committee on mandate review, and I'm just curious about what specific mandates they're referring to. I might have a guess about it, but I don't know if there's any more context.
Yeah, and there's, so I can tell you, when I was working, well, when I was working on the Native American curriculum resolution, there was a lot of conversations that took place, that we're constantly adding mandates, but we're not taking any away. So the schools are still teaching about the flag, like constantly, and it's very difficult to take away mandates, because we don't want to not teach something, but we're not lengthening the school day, and we're not lengthening the school year, but we're teaching more and more and more, and so there has to be some sort of balance. And I think that's what this committee is meant to do, and I think that's why this is on here.
So I guess the language that concerns me is that it's talking about greater local control of education, which I feel like is-
Slippery slope.
I don't want to say dog whistle, but that's the only words that come to mind, about changing cert, that changing public education so students in certain districts don't get certain education that I think everyone should get? So that would be my concern about that.
I hear you. Anybody else?
But I don't think we have to be unanimous, so I can just say no.
No, I know, I know, I just-
You, you bring up a valid point.
You do, absolutely. And this is why we hold our elected officials accountable. Okay, the last one, financial contributions for school board elections, this is an amendment of position statement seven, oh-seven, and they recommend do adopt.
Agreed.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. Agreed, okay. And then the current position statements, deletions and amendments, does anyone have any issues with anything? I can pull things from the consent agenda, but I better have a good reason.
No.
No? Okay. Okay. All right, guys.
I'm sorry, I gotta go back to number seven.
Okay.
It says, "All mandates shall be subject to a sunset provision." I got a lot of questions. Future mandates? Current mandates?
All mandates.
All ma, all mandates.
I also wonder about whether mask mandates are included in this, if that is one of the issue, is why this is specifically coming up now? But I don't know, because I don't, I don't know the context of-
So what, what I would recommend on this one is that maybe that's, our delegate can ask that question right there and then, and depending, and we can guide her based on what they answer her and how to vote. Because they will, they will, and you can also ask for a rationale as to why they are putting all mandates, instead of, or are they being a specific, I don't know, depend, you can ask the question when you're, when there is there.
Right, but I can't communicate with all of you.
It would be a violation of the meeting act.
Well, we could tell you right now.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying, like, if they clarify this in a way that maybe they are satisfied, then vote this way.
Okay.
That's what I'm suggesting.
You the discretion to decide if they ask, answer it well enough.
Okay, okay. I keep thinking, I keep coming back to, there was, I don't think it got passed, but there was a mandate on the floor that was going to mandate PE for every single day. Which sounds great, but unless you're in a district like ours, where our lunchrooms are our gymnasiums, and it would be impossible to do. And so I think that that's why the control comes up, is situations where a district just doesn't have the resources to do it, and I understand that, I understand your concern, absolutely, but I think that's part of the rationale for this. But yes, I can find out, like, if it's, if it's all mandates, ooh, sorry, then if you want me to vote a different way, I can, but I, I guess I need everyone's voice on that.
I would say after, sorry, Wendy, after the discussion we've had, and pointing out some of this language, where it is saying all, and it is introducing the ability to have a sunset provision on mandates, I would change my vote to say that I do not support this, because there's no statute of limitations on how far back local districts could go, and if there was something saying like, from this point forward, I'd feel more comfortable, but there's no knowing what local districts might make a decision to do.
That's true.
I mean, basically, it kind of puts curriculum in the hands of, I mean, you could sunset any curriculum, and any district could just create their own. How are they going to do that? I doubt this is going to pass, but I agree.
Okay.
I doubt it too.
So we all, we all refute the recommendation of the committee?
Okay.
Is that good? All right, all right, great, great discussion, thank you so much. Is that all?
I got it.
Okay. All right, wonderful, moving on to correspondence.
There was no correspondence this month.
Thank you very much, moving on to public comments. Anyone who wishes to address the Board of Education can approach the podium, turn the microphone on, state your name for the record? Good evening.
Hi, Jonathan Palace, just checking in really fast. In September, I brought up the Berwyn Free Library Initiative, was trying to fund the library over at Kaminsky, thanks to the work of the families, the, and the administration and the staff of Kaminsky, that, that book box was put in place last month, so I wasn't here to report on that last month, but thank you very much, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you for your comment, anyone else? All right, moving on to the action items for the evening, we have the consent agenda. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one member, items not removed may be adopted by general consent without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the board. Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion being by Jimenez, seconded by?
I'll second.
Oh, seconded by White LaGrande. On the roll, it was moved to approve the consent agenda. On the roll call, please.
Ironay. Steinfeld, aye. Dressel?
Aye.
W Gonzalez?
Aye.
Jimenez? Jay Gonzalez absent. White LaGrande?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, last chance for a public comment? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you very much, board member comments?
I want to thank for the presence, thank you for, for them, and thank you for the staff, and thank you to Piper Administration for the great presentation that you did. It brings me really good memories.
I just have a random comment. I was just thinking about it during your, the Illinois Report Card presentation, and it's not against them or against us, but it frustrates me that absenteeism is such a big issue when we're still, I mean, the pandemic was going on when they took that snapshot, and currently, there's still, not only COVID, but many other diseases, germs, and it makes me frustrated, having had a sick kid for the last two weeks, that I feel guilty on our district, that either you send your kid to spread disease, or else you get dinged, it just makes me frustrated, that's all I wanted to say. So I don't think that's fair.
That's a fair frustration, yeah, totally. Okay.
But thank you.
All right. As I said earlier in the meeting, this weekend is our conference, so thank you to all the board members that will be attending, it is a very great conference, there's a lot to learn, so just, I look forward to seeing you all there and having dinner and stuff. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded by W Gonzalez. It was moved to adjourn the regular meeting at eight twenty-three PM. On the roll call, Ironay.
Dressel?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Jimenez? Steinfeld, aye. Jay Gonzalez absent. White LaGrande?
Aye.
W Gonzalez?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you very much, everybody have a nice, nice weekend and a nice Thanksgiving.